Okay, I'm gonna call the council meeting for December 3rd. Please rise and give your application to our mayor, followed by the legislative meeting.
My prayer tonight is to our intelligent designer and a most wise creator, that he would guide our hearts and our minds to the depths of the wisdom needed to continue to move our community forward in peace, in safety, and with knowledge, looking towards the future. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a bit of housekeeping. We're gonna have one add-on. Uh, this will be number... It would be I, and it's gonna be, basically, we're gonna talk about making a resolution, I guess we have to give this completed before the end of the year, for appointing a deputy tax collector, which the state is now requiring, so we will be discussing that when we get to that. I'm gonna jump around now, too. I'm gonna skip over the subcommittee reports and go right to the presentation of the firefighters.
Good evening, President Terrone, Mayor Thomas, council members. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Once again, recognize the members of our volunteer fire department. It's my pleasure to do that tonight. We'll be recognizing four members of the area fire departments, three from Pottstown and one from San Antonio. And at this time, Battalion Chief Chad Quinter will come up front, Captain Steven Smola, firefighter Brad Reiner, and Chief Rick Brenninger. These four gentlemen are being recognized for their actions at the same incident. This was a fire on the 28th of April of this year at 245 King Street in the borough of Pottstown. That's the old former borough hall, which had been converted into a multi-unit apartment building. Upon the arrival of the initial Pottstown units, they found a very heavy fire going on, and they struck a second alarm, which is why San Antonio got involved, along with several other mutual aid fire companies. During the suppression of that fire, these gentlemen, along with several other firefighters, were assigned to search and rescue within that building because it was heavily charged with smoke. During that search operation, firefighter Reiner discovered an elderly gentleman on the top floor of the building who was in respiratory distress and unable to leave the building on his own. And he immediately requested assistance, to which Captain Smola came to his assistance, subsequently Battalion Chief Chad Quinter and Rick Brenninger, Chief of San Antonio. During that operation, Chief Quinter and Brad Reiner carried the gentleman out of the building with the assistance of Chief Brenninger. Captain Smola remained in the building, took command of the rest of the crew in the building, finished the search of the building, and subsequently successfully confirmed that there were no other residents left in the building. With their actions, that elderly gentleman was safely removed and is well and alive today. To their credit and the credit of the fire department in general. Excuse me. For that, Battalion Chief Quinter and firefighter Reiner will be getting life-saving awards tonight, which I'll present at this time. Chief Brenninger and Captain Smola will get exceptional duty awards for their support efforts in this rescue operation throughout the building. And I'll present that at this time. It's a proud day for all of us.
Thank you, gentlemen, and we certainly are fortunate to have, you know, such great firefighters, not only in our community, but the surrounding community. All right, we're gonna have the next presentation for the downtown window decorating contest.
I'm here on behalf of Post Halloween Extravaganza. It started about a year and a half ago, a collaboration of the Pottstown Elks, Pottstown Ambucks, the Order of the Eastern Star, and St. Thomas Sonic Lodge. We are looking to organize a group of activities for the fall to enhance Pottstown and maybe raise a couple dollars for ourselves, for our causes and so forth. Last year at a Padilla meeting, we did a little presentation, and after the presentation, the Moms Club approached us. They said they would like to get involved and they would like to help with something, didn't know what at the time. We mentioned how the window decorating contest, which used to be a standard here in Pottstown and had gone away for a few years, and they really felt that's something they wanted to get involved with. So at that point, basically, I introduced the ladies of the Moms Club to Sheila Dugan of Padilla, and I got out of the way. And these ladies did a wonderful, wonderful job of putting together the window decorating contest that you saw downtown this year. A lot of it was done on short notice. We have some things that certainly we need to tidy up, and they really have plans of training this into a really beautiful thing next year. But again, Post Halloween Extravaganza sponsored it, that's pretty much the extent of it. These ladies and Sheila really deserve all the credit for getting everything together. So at this time, I would like to award to our winners. We had 16 windows, which were decorated by more than 16 artists, because some of the windows were decorated by a group of artists and so forth. So again, for first-year experience, I thought it was a really, really nice turnout. The award for the most artistic goes to the O'Wark family, which Michelle, Christian, and Abigail.
And this is also...
And along with the trophy, there is a voucher. Along with the trophy, there's a voucher to be used in the borough of Pottstown, in the Padilla district, for $50. And I think we have all for these folks. Anything you'd like to offer?
Just thank you. We want to be a part of it.
This wasn't expected. We had no idea. We just wanted to handle it.
Now, our second award goes to the Pottstown Roller Derby Rock Stars for their artistic works on the ABJ Building. And all I've gotten is, I assume, your team names. The names I got was Anita Smackin, Kessel Run, Rogue Rage, and F-Stop.
You have the people's choice? Oh, you're right down there.
Yeah, that's the people's choice.
Okay. And also, for those ladies, because they didn't want to all four fight over $50, they will be receiving two $25 vouchers, so they can fight over two $25 vouchers.
Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations and thank you very much.
You'll have to come to the next bout to see who wins it.
And then we have one more award.
We have two. We have an honorable mention and then we have a certificate of appreciation.
Okay. We have two more. We have an honorable mention, and the honorable mention goes to Jaylen Kennedy of the Pottstown Middle School.
And we get the trophy and the art kit here, and a gift certificate from Argentos is attached to that.
Jaylen decorated the Steel River Playhouse windows. And in addition to what she's already received, she will be receiving a gift certificate for Milkman cupcakes and Argentos pizza. I apologize, they didn't get to us yet.
No, I got Argentos is on here.
Oh, okay.
And then we have... We have, I'll just say, we have another artist that graced us with her presence here tonight that we want to present a participation award to, that's Sarah Culp. And we're gonna add Renary's Flooring for us.
Would you like to pose for a picture, please?
Yep. And I want to have Mr. Terrone hopefully sign your certificate. This is on behalf of the borough of Pottstown, and thank you.
I thought you really put a lot of effort and time into that painting. It really stood out. We wanted to give you a certificate. Thanks for coming.
I'll need to, I guess, Mr. Christmas for next year?
Next year.
I really need that.
Wonderful.
We hope that she'll be a mentor next year, and our close to school is inviting all of the artists that participated this year back to help mentor the next years. So we'll be in touch with that. Okay, great. We'll leave that after the panel meeting. Thanks.
I'd like to thank the council for giving us a moment to make these presentations. The one thing that we've come up with so far that I'd like to share with the borough, how many people in here, if I told them, "Go right now to the Masonic Lodge in Pottstown, and we have free coffee and donuts," how many people, raise your hands, can walk right to that lodge right now? Masonic Lodge, we have over 500 members. Not letting them go is 1,200. It's about a 90-by-90, three-story, large brick building visible from High Street. There's people who have lived in the borough of Pottstown all their lives, 50, 60, 70 years, and don't even know Masonic Lodge exists. The Elks have come to also realize how many people don't realize the Elks exist, or what they do beside hold weddings at their venue. People don't realize what the Ambucks, the very nice things they do for the community, for crippled children, for their handicapped vehicles that they produce and that type of thing. Eastern Star does some very nice things. Moms Club, they haven't really come about with just what all they do. But we've learned that we need to be more visible. The borough of Pottstown, same thing, can be more visible, and we would like to cooperate with those things. You have, I know Vice and Taylor Aspirations coming up, 4th of July and so forth, and we'd really like to help make Pottstown a destination that people really want to look forward, coming through. This is Audrey Ross and Marie Haig, president and vice president, I believe, of Pottstown Moms. We probably have one minute left, so if you have anything you would like to offer on behalf of the Moms?
Absolutely. Actually, this Saturday, what we're doing is a giftaway that's gonna be held at the YMCA. We're very, this is very exciting for us. It's our first year doing this, just like the Halloween was our first year doing this. But we're giving away gently-used toys to anybody who says that they need one. We're not requiring any proof of documentation, just come. If you say you need it, take it. And we're very excited about doing that. We're trying to be more and more involved in the community. Like I said, we've done Halloween Project, we're doing the giftaway. We try to visit the Manor Care on Charlotte Street at least once a quarter to go in. They tend to like children. They like seeing them, so we like bringing them.
It's been a learning experience to be in a model business and learn about all these groups as well, and hopefully we can work more together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, the windows were raised. It added a, you know, different view to our downtown, with the windows being painted. I agree, last year or two years ago, we did have the Christmas decorations on the windows, so they were well-received, so hopefully that can also become part of the decorating. Okay, continuing back up to subcommittee reports, infrastructure, council call.
Cheryl, want to make some comments?
Yeah, we have some things to discuss on the last codes and infrastructure meeting. We talked about impervious paving once again, and as we know, Mr. Hilton was here last month in the demonstration again. And there's still this confusion about what flexi-pave is, and it's very new to the borough of Pottstown, even though it's being used in various applications throughout the country. So Doug's still on the kind of the fence where, you know, he's saying, "Yes, you know, we can approve it for tree surrounds." But I think because it is so new here, and we do need to... There is a deadline to apply for grants, so my kind of idea with this is to see if we can make it a little more expansive, approving flexi-pave for sidewalk tree surrounds and other applications, as recommended by the manufacturer, based on the final approval of the wording of the ordinance by the solicitor and the borough manager. And that would cover us completely in the use, so that we're not getting into using it in areas where there's some problems up against the sidewalks, but also expanding its use a little more than just tree surrounds.
Well, I think where the problem is up against buildings.
Right. Yeah, so that way, if we, you know, if we have it and do it in such a way where the borough manager and the solicitor have the final wording of the ordinance, then we're protecting ourselves, because they're aware of and would work with public works.
Quite frankly, I think some of the areas where the concrete goes right up to the building, I think if it was just wide enough, because some of those areas, like the sidewalks, like four feet, and it only needs to be three.
Right.
So you could have flower beds, you know, something there versus just concrete, plus it would add to helping out the stormwater.
Right. And then, and the flexi-pave, even though it's expensive to ship in, for actual repair costs, it's a lot cheaper than concrete, because concrete, you have to jackhammer it all out and report, where flexi-pave can just be removed in pieces and pretty much hand tool back in again if there's any damages into it in the future. So the upfront cost is higher, but I think on the backside, we're really gonna benefit great if we can get some grant funding for this product. But in order to do that, we need to, you know, we're gonna have to, we're gonna need to approve or adopt an ordinance in order for that to move forward.
I think where the true muster's gonna come into is through the winter with throwing salt, using snow blowers over this product, you know, shovels, things like that.
I mean, and they do, Steve, they do use it in, they use it in upstate New York, where they get an incredible amount of snow. So like I said, you know, Pottstown, being new to it and not fully understanding the product, it might be better to go with manufacturers' specifications. And then our electronic sign, did the electric get hooked up on the...
More of the electric isn't...
It's more of the electric gets hooked up, and we're still talking about a color for the lighting, right? Because Doug...
No, it'd be the same color as the mini-golf.
It's the mini-golf. Now, we did talk about voting on a color, and I realized that white is too, you're not gonna see that during the day. But I was looking around other municipalities that are using solid colors, because we would like a multicolor, you know, but we know we can't have that, that are using like the green or blue, which are attractive, easy on the eye, but of course, whatever we pick is gonna represent our borough, so we want to pick something that's gonna be, something that's gonna be classy for the project. So you want to go with a color, or are we gonna leave Doug go with amber?
Amber's a color.
Amber's a color.
It's a girl, too.
It's a girl.
I mean...
Jade's a color. Jade's a girl.
What's gonna give the best visibility?
I think there, I think all three of those colors are very visible, even during the day, because I have to drive it around.
What was the cost to go with the multicolor?
Multicolor was in additional $5,000.
$5,000? Oh, that's a lot.
Is it, can the light where the sign be equipped later on down the road?
LEDs are, you have to order either the red or the amber or whatever color it is. So we're in the standard, all the equipment is available.
Now, is the unit?
Yes. They have panels that are already...
But I mean, the lights that go in it, though, you can't get the light that is all those colors, and it just have the electronic running, just the...
If you get the color, the color cable, they have multiple LED bulbs in them, or they have the ability to change the color within the one bulb. But we're already committed for out here, the next one, we can certainly talk about some other colors.
Oh, you're already committed to the amber?
Well, it's already, it's ordered in already.
The amber.
Yes. It's just a matter of the electric being hooked up, and they should have a definite install date next week when the message, where you actually go in.
The ones that look bad are the ones that are red, especially at night.
It's very, I know, I agree, Steve, that red is very hard on the eyes. The amber is the orange color that we're using on the mini-bomb.
So we agree they're all visible at night?
Yes.
Problem is during the day.
They are, the greens and blues aren't visible during the day, but Doug has just stated that they're already committed to that.
But not the white.
I don't think that you'd see white during the day in hindsight. I think it'd be difficult to see in bright sunlight.
I say we go with amber.
Now, it's too late.
I don't think we have a choice but the amber.
Good choice, Doug.
Thanks, Travis.
Any other questions for infrastructure? Okay, public safety, Vice President Gary?
Thank you. The first thing is, there will be no meeting on Monday, but then, one of the things that we are discussing in the finance committee that goes kind of hand-in-hand with safety is, we're looking at the potential of switching over our streetlight system to LED lighting for every single streetlight within the borough. The reason we think this ties in with safety is, by doing that, there are certainly, we believe, very significant cost savings involved, but also, you get better illumination, so it's a brighter area, which is in and of itself a deterrent to crime, and it also would give us the ability internally to increase or decrease illumination at certain areas. So if there are areas where we want to specifically target, the borough manager or whoever's gonna be in charge of it could direct that that area have even increased illumination than what's normal. So we think it would be a very, very significant crime deterrent as well, and frankly, also assist, we're never gonna eradicate crime completely, but if you have better illumination, not only does it deter crime, but it also makes it easier to witness crime, and we can get better descriptions from what's going on. So we think that ties into safety, so that's something we're looking at pretty closely. And also, I've asked Chief Drumheller if you want to just give us some updates about what's going on in the borough.
To dovetail what you were saying about lighting and safety, one of the plans that I have for the beginning of the year is, I'm going to make a full-court press for people to get cameras in around their buildings. I have talked to a recent building owner around, right downtown here, I'll save his name for later, but they have agreed in parcel to put them in at the building right downtown and at their house. A camera is the best witness there is, and I know some people think that's a big brother thing, but let me just tell you this, when you're in a fight, who better to have on your side than your big brother? And I'm telling you, when you have what we had recently, you, this is the type of things that you have to make a decision which side you're on. You can't be neutral. You can't say, "I don't want to get involved. I don't want to talk to the police. It affects us all." And I'm telling you, I burned every detective for every hour that I could possibly get. I had detectives that slept one hour in 24, and we're working hard to resolve these crimes. First thing I did is I reached out to Risa Furman, and I spoke to her, and she dispatched her county detectives. We had them within five hours of our request. I also asked her for the violent, the violent crimes task force that she's put together. It's a very new division, and they'll be, they're arriving in the borough as we speak. We will put a full-court press on to end, to bring those people to justice, but I caution you, you have to get involved. You have to talk. You can't tell us nothing. You can't say, "I don't want to be involved," and that's one of the frustrations that we have as police officers that we've been dealing with, is that people, that people just don't want to get involved. Either they're scared, they're afraid, they don't, they have reasons, and that just frustrates our detective division. But we're working hard to work through that, and we have game plans. And one of my game plans is the cameras. I really think a camera, camera system, and I've actually been, I've actually had a couple residents, the Hill School has put their cameras in, and I had a couple businesses approach me and say, "You know what? We want to get involved in this." This is the wave of the future, and this is what I think we need to get, because when you have a camera, you have evidence, and people will know, will begin to know that, and that'll, that'll help deter crime in our town. I think that'll be a big thing. Plus, the fact of it is, is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sound partial here, but we have a very hard-working police department, and I'm very proud of them. They've put in long hours and given up a lot of time with their families so that they can bring this crime to closure. I, however, have to tell you this, the caveat for all of this is, while I'd like to tell you what's going on, I can't, because it's, it's, it's an active investigation, and once you ask the DA's office, I hand all the press over to them, and they're gonna handle that. So you're gonna, you're gonna continually hear from the DA's office, I hope, eventually bringing you some decent news, okay? Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I have just one, since you brought up about the cameras, and I think this is a wave that's gonna be occurring across the United States, and that's body cameras for the police officers.
Yes.
You know, certainly, I think, you know, that would also be helpful when they come upon a crime scene, so that if something does occur, everyone's protected.
Well, we're halfway there. We have cameras in the cars, and just so you remember, last year, you, we received a grant for $68,000 to put new cameras in the cars, so we have that, and that's the most newest technology that you can, you can purchase. The body cameras, I will tell you that I asked DA Furman about them, and I'm waiting for her response back that says, "Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow them on the police officers," because they're very close to the wiretap law, and I wanted her ruling on that, and if she's behind them, well then, I in fact would be more than amicable. I, I did take notice that Furma, our insurance company, has actually been giving out some grants to be able to afford the body cameras. Before I chase all that, though, and try and get that money and try and get the cameras, I want to make sure that it's gonna be a go for us in Montgomery County.
And one other thing before I turn it back to Vice President Gary is, Monday, Borough Manager, myself, and Mayor are meeting with Senator Mensch to discuss some of these activities that are occurring, so to see any more fundings or whatever, you know, are available for our use, so we're gonna have discussion with him.
Well, just so you know, I'll never say no to more police officers.
You're gonna be there, too. I forgot to include you.
Okay, okay. But I'll never say no to more police officers. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The mayor has some comments she would like to say also this time.
Yeah, since this evening, I've prepared a statement for threefold purpose. One is to publicly allay the fears of residents and visitors to Pottstown, which are, you know, they're real and live out there. know, they're real and live out there. Secondly, to bolster confidence in the community. And thirdly, to make it known publicly my support and praise, as well as liaise with the Police Department, as well as the borough and staff. We're all aware that we have challenges in our community. We have a small faction of people, unfortunately, creating fear in the midst of a growth environment, creating fear in an educational growth environment. This fear looms in the face of a Pottstown that has been scrucising up its financial house over the past nine years to be attractive to investors. Investors we need to bring viable wage-paying jobs and other opportunities to our town. We know that we have people of varying skill sets and abilities and capabilities. And my responsibility is to every person in every socioeconomic class. These challenges that we have in Pottstown find us having one of the largest and busiest police forces in the region. However, with the impulsive nature of our society, with the increased unemployment present, as well as the factoring in of drug use and trafficking, indeed, again, I say we do have our challenges. The random, sporadic, and often unprecedented violence that we see in our small town finds its way into the most unlikely places in the nation, in rural fields, in Amish country, in schools, in daycares, as well as homes. The loss of life and property is never wanted. It's never tolerable for anyone to have that much power to upset the stability and the safety of our citizens. I just want to assure you that the police are doing all they can, as we've heard the chief say, to professionally put the pieces together to find and arrest those guilty of crimes. Again, I would just echo, there needs to be participation. The police force is 46 strong, with seven new officers hitting the streets just this year. But this is not a job that they can do alone. It's a job that involves all of us. Our police response times have improved, and we are excellent in the triage of a community that has become very comfortable and has developed trust with their police department. We want that to continue. I'm confident in the level of professionalism with the chief and the police force to get the job done for this community. I'm very well aware of the things that have been implemented for the safety and security of residents and hope that you, the citizen of Pottstown, and the viewer, and the visitor, would extend that same trust as well. We are not living in a community that's under siege. Schools were open today. Safe walking routes in our community recently met with recent state assistance to the tune of $300,000. It's our job to remain confident in the forward thinking and the desire for a better Pottstown. This is the part that involves everyone. As a parent, and as well a grandparent of children from ages one to 18, our conversations in our house are typically speaking of the future and the good things that are going on now, the children. Of course, we want safety for every person in this community, and especially the children. But it's the job of adults and parents to encourage their families. The government has its place, and it is in place, to provide stable foundations for that to happen. But it takes everyone to shape community culture, not the small subset offsetting the momentum. Let's examine real time some of the things that are happening in our community, how we project ourselves. One, on social media. I'm not on all the blogs, but I receive a lot of the feedback. And I'm just going to suffice on that note to say, we could all be doing a little bit better with our appeal and presentation of Pottstown in the social media. Let's face the challenges ahead, considering the composition of the majority of Pottstown, not the unpleasant and smallest of factions creating nuisances in our borough. Let's shape a future with our eyes wide open, with our hearts aware and keenly looking ahead. And I'd just like to say also that other countries use the cameras ad nauseam, to the point where they can trace a crime back to a room inside of a building, to the next building or place where it's occurred. So I'm really excited about the implementation of widespread camera use and have found that there are many citizens that already use cameras and have, you know, been able to provide those for some of the police inquiries or problems that have surfaced have been resolved through the use of cameras that are already on residential housing. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That is all.
Economic development and business liaison, anything, Erica, that the irons right now?
The only thing I did want to mention was, I don't know if you saw it recently, the Montgomery County Community College received a special designation by the U.S. Coalition for Bicycles, based out of Washington, D.C. They did a ride a few days ago. So the only other community college is in Santa Monica, California, so it's a really neat designation for them with Sico River Trail and their shuttle between here and the west campus. So that was just nice, and sort of working on that. And I know Sheila for Pia might want to cover Small Business Saturday, but I heard that was very successful. So this is my...
Okay, thank you. Transportation, Counsel Culp.
Yeah, I don't have anything written up, but I will say, we received an email from, it's Eve's Enyard. And she had said that the full closure period ended November 20th. They completed the runway safety area, installed compliant embankments, replaced two broken drainage pipes, milled the runway, and applied a base course. And anyway, and some other things were done. Now, the rest of it will be finished up in the spring because of the temperatures. But I went up and I visited the other day, and I was very impressed. The airport looks fantastic. I mean, the hang... The inside and the office areas, they redid the whole thing. And the girl I talked to had said, "A lot of the pilots come in." They said, "It looks like the runway is wider than it used to be, just because of it being cleaned up and all the, you know, the weeds and everything taken away." So it's doing well, and it looks very good. And I think our next meeting is next month, right?
December 7.
December 7. Yeah.
Yeah, I was up to see it myself, too. It does really look great. The... I was up to see Depp Penrod's little plane, too, that she bought.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Pretty neat, though. All right. Pottstown School Board, I do not see Mr. Williams. He's here Monday night. We'll have him speak. Okay. Our ad hoc first zoning an animal, Counsel Miller.
Did we skip blighted, or can we go back to that? Only because they might not have a meeting, but I actually have a question about the procedure and process as far as blighted.
That's Monday night.
Oh, Monday night, okay. I'm sorry. We met this morning for the ad hoc animal committee, and we're working on updates to the ACO agreement, which is including policy for volunteers at our kennel. And Mr. Garner has begun working on a volunteer application that is very extensive. So we, as the committee, have to put together the policy that coincides with that application. Zoning, ad hoc zoning, we, the committee, has agreed and brought forth changes to our parking. And we recognize that parking is a very complicated issue in the borough and very problematic because we have, you know, not just single homes anymore, but we have a lot of apartments and congested areas and trying to get everybody parking in. So we have... We have agreed and made suggestions to increases in the parking spaces, which you guys all have a copy in front of you, that we're looking at two spaces, two spaces for every application with the exception of commercial space, which is one space per thousand square feet, and three spaces in commercial institutional. But all the family dwellings, the single units, the apartment complexes, increasing it to two spaces off-street parking per each unit. Mr. Williams, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No. During the discussions in the zoning review committee, what we've all agreed on is that the majority of Pottstown was built out long ago when many families didn't even own a car. So the streets and the parking were set for those conditions at that time. Today, living standards are entirely different. A lot of people, even individuals living alone, have multiple cars. And to provide parking for the one or two cars per individual, plus the visitors, plus, 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 we'd have to tear down half of Pottstown and rebuild it. So we're trying to amend the ordinance to fit the conditions that exist today. Period. That's it.
Anything you may add?
Just in addition to the changes to the residential dwelling types and the required spaces, there were some other changes to the substance of the ordinance that I think the committee felt pretty strongly about. First was the provision under Section 601B. That was always, at least in my opinion, a little bit vague concerning the use of or the counting of off-street parking spaces to satisfy parking requirements. So I think that section has been shored up quite a bit by basically saying you can't allow off-street parking... On-street parking to be used to satisfy those requirements unless the zoning officer makes a specific determination in writing and is able to demonstrate that certain conditions exist, and you can't use more than 10% of those spaces for counting towards your off-street requirement. So I think that's a better section than what we had before, because I think there was always a little bit of uncertainty as whether or not the on-street spaces counted or didn't count. The other thing the ordinance makes clear, which is typical with most zoning ordinances, is that garages don't count as parking spaces because, frankly, people use their garages for other things than vehicles. Storage. And finally, I guess, the committee did talk about the compact parking spaces that the existing ordinance allows for up to 20% of spaces to be compact spaces, eight by 15, even in a relatively small parking lot. And I think the committee felt that that was probably a little bit too generous. So it's been cut back to 10%, but you need to start with a parking lot of at least 12 spaces. So they're still providing for some compact cars, but not quite so many, figuring that with the larger trucks and things that are out there today, you might not have sufficient space. So those were the highlights of what the changes are, in addition to what Counsel Miller and Counsel Wehan indicated.
There are other provisions of the zoning ordinance that you're looking at, correct?
Yep. And that will... We'll have that ready for next month.
Now, in order to keep costs at a minimum, is there... Should we package this all at one shot when we advertise, or should we do it piecemeal?
Well, that's really up to counsel to decide how you want to do it. This is not going to be a significant ordinance amendment, and it can be done relatively quickly if you think time is of the essence. I think the other things that we're working on are probably a little more complicated.
The committee did think we should move on this step as soon as possible. And there will be other changes in the future, and those we might want to bundle.
Any other thoughts?
This would... This would only impact new construction.
Yes.
Future projects.
Conversion or licensing or...
That... Yeah, that makes conversion of...
And that would be conversion from something other than a residential dwelling to a residential dwelling.
Correct.
Yes.
If you have an existing house, you're not going to be able to force the house to these standards. It already is there.
Has staff looked through this and feel acceptable?
Yes. Yes, and yes.
So the recommendation then for Monday evening would be to...
To adopt. To a big motion to... Yeah.
Yeah. A public hearing will be required. The ordinance will have to be placed in a final form. And again, probably the earliest that can occur would be your meeting in February.
So this will... Monday will just start the movement of it. Okay, it'll be listed. Anything else for zoning?
That's it for now. You want more?
No. And you've done animal. Okay. Bicentennial, Counsel Culp.
Yeah. I've passed out rough drafts for our first rough draft for the bicentennial, and we'll be revising this within the next couple days, since we only had the meeting last night and we did the rough draft before the meeting. So there'll be a revision coming out shortly. We're making headway.
I apologize once again. I was down in Norristown and could not make a meeting until it got back to almost six. Unless it was a meeting that Counsel Miller was holding and probably still would have been going on. Our animal meeting was two hours today?
It was... It was pretty extensive, but we have a lot to... We have a lot to accomplish.
I always block in two hours. Okay. We're up to the public works facility bid war. I'm going to turn it over to the solicitor as far as our responsibility at this point.
Yeah, I think we've discussed this a number of occasions. And at this point, the bids were open October 7th. And from a legal perspective, you have 60 days to take action to award. The deadline then to award is December the 6th. That doesn't take you to Monday night. So if you're inclined to take action to award to the lowest bidder, which, again, was the Steubner bid that we talked about the other month, you're in position to do that. I believe you've received some information from the Borough Manager with respect to comparisons of the Limerick project, as well as the costs that may have been incurred so far to date. And it's really counsel's direction or discretion on how you proceed.
Did you supply the cost today to the board, Counsel?
I emailed it to you.
Yeah. The cost to date, including the purchase of the ground, is $470,000, $221,000. So that's what we spent, legal, engineering, and also the purchase of the property, test boring, whatever needed to be done so far. The choice is yours.
I'm inclined to act on it tonight.
My response would be, first, I want to thank Counselor Culp for bringing to our attention last year or last month that there may be other options. I think we've all had ample time to go down, take a look at the Limerick site. And also, my thanks go to our Borough Manager. Mark did a fine job of putting together a comparison and contrast of the two projects. And from that, I am inclined to go forward with this tonight to award the contract to Steubner. And I do want to reiterate from past months that I would like our solicitor to incorporate a clause in there that they gave us a bid of X dollars, and it shall not be exceeded for any reason. I don't want to go through the scenarios that neighboring school districts have gone through with their so-called architects and contractors. Either this is a valid offer they gave to us, which we're receiving, or it is not. Period.
I'm going to have our solicitor address that, because I have a concern with unforeseen... And being in construction all my life...
Understand that.
And a change order, you know, to fix this problem, I'd hate to see the project come to a stop that just because we have in there a clause of not to exceed.
Well, if there is significant reason... And I went through this. I didn't build multimillion-dollar buildings, but I did do multimillion-dollar projects at Stanley Flag for a number of years. And we were bringing quite expensive equipment in. Not only did it have to fit in the facility, it had to perform according to what they promised. Sometimes there were unforeseeable situations, and that was something to sit at the table and discuss. But we never went on week after week, month after month, with overruns and hoops we didn't see this, and we didn't expect this. We're not renovating a place that should have been condemned like Rupert. We're starting with a brown field now. If there's anything they didn't anticipate, that's not the borough's fault.
No, I agree. But, you know, sometimes even, you know, huloes.
That can be negotiated afterward.
All right. Just so we have that it's not locked in, it's this or nothing.
There's no way we can guarantee that there'll be no cost overruns just to Wehan, but I appreciate... There's no way we can guarantee that there'll be no cost overruns, Mr. Wehan, but I appreciate the position you're coming from. I think the issue is if there is something that needs to be addressed, that has to be brought to council and approved in advance, as opposed to happening, you know, in the field and then come back and say, by the way, you know, there's $117,000 extra that you need to approve because it's already been done. So, certainly that, I think, can be put in a contract. In fact, right now, I think there is, if there's any variation of any of the line, I think it's $10,000, it's got to come back or at least be approved before anything happens. So, I think you have some, at least mechanism in place to make sure that doesn't happen. I can't tell you what's under the ground, so I don't know that, you know, anybody can at this point. We don't foresee problems. Again, in a job, there's always going to be some overages, hopefully some underages go back and forth to balance out. So, again, we'll hold a figure to as close as we can to the low bid of $4,074,000, but I would be telling you a story if we could guarantee it's not going to be $1 more.
And, you know, what scares me is what's underground because even though we've done test boring and even tying into the sewer up there and so forth, you never know what's going to happen when you're doing that, right Doug?
There'll be surprises.
You know, so, those are the areas, you know, the unforeseen underground would be my biggest concern.
So, you would agree that everything above ground should be 99% reliable?
Oh, yeah, that's probably going to be, that's cut and stone. That's, you know, materials are what they are and everything else. The design is what we, you know, chose and...
If we run into problems underground, that could be extensive costs, could it not?
Well, the test boards were done. It's a lot that I don't think it has any history, and we've gone as far back as we could. And Bill, our town historic is, you ever remember anything on that property up there, Bill?
No. You don't anticipate it?
I mean, I don't even think people use it as, you know, a lot of times vacant lots become dump areas and so forth, but that was just a grassy field.
Was it farmland at one time, maybe?
I don't even know.
I think the frustrating thing is when you have extras or overages that obviously should have been addressed upfront. And again, from discussions with the architect, they feel confident that, you know, they've put everything into the project that needs to be done. Beyond that, you know, certain...
And that was one thing, too, with Kimmel. One of the reasons why we selected them or they rose to the top was their, how close they were to their bid versus their estimates and so forth. And they've been pretty right on, so they're pretty confident, so you can have more faith in our expertise. But I'm sure our solicitor will take your words under advisement and try and get that in as much or wherever he can as far as with that verbiage and so forth.
Are we employing a third-party clerk for the work, or are we using in-house staff?
We're using Kimmel Bograder, our architect.
Okay.
Would now be the appropriate time for a motion then?
Well, again, we would have to get an extension from Steubner if we defer it till Monday night. So, certainly if council's inclined to move ahead, it would be the motion. And again, we're permitted to take action at this meeting, but it would require or permit public comment prior to the vote being completed.
If I may, then I will make a motion that we accept the low bid from Steubner.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the floor for public comment if anyone would like to address council concerning this project. Seeing none? We'll have a vote on this. Roll call, please. Yeah, is there any other discussion? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make mention that I'm sorry I stirred the pot, but I just felt that this is something that needed to be looked at, you know, and, you know, just the concern that I had for the amount it was costing us to do this. And I don't think it was, did any harm at all, you know, to look at this.
Certainly no harm involved, and I think I was the most critical. And the reason I was, I think, and I'll still reiterate with it as we're going through this process, sometimes I would like council to become more or be more involved when we have the discussions all in the way, you know. We're having good discussion with, moving forward with some of the issues with safety, the lights and so forth. Now, please, you are an elected official, voice your opinion. It's just, my concern is when we get everything in place and when we spend all the time and money on a thing, and then at the 11th hour, we say, wait a minute, I don't know if I really want to do this. Those thoughts should be, and concerns should be along the way versus at the 11th hour. And that was my, and I apologize if you took it anyway, but me being a little frustrated that these concerns weren't voiced. And, you know, hopefully in the future, council will do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's more unfortunate for me coming in on the backside, and I'm just seeing, I'm really seeing the final product and saying, what do you think? Not having the opportunity to be involved in the planning process. So, I did have lots of questions that were actually answered for me. I mean, our current garage is structurally unsound, which I learned in our, because in infrastructure meeting, so that was important. And then I also had questions about the use of existing buildings that are out there, like the old Bethlehem Steel. And then I learned that there were, there was no space appropriate for what we wanted to do, and the one space that was, we put in a market bid for and it was rejected. So, this was the, this was the alternative and actually after looking at the comparisons and what we're doing, and you wanted to make a garage that was presentable to a community. You don't want to be out there with a tin shack and then upsetting all the neighbors and having the parking amenities for the workers. I think, I think this is a good thing.
And one thing this building is, is going to be sustainable. That's a buzzword we'll be throwing around, I guess, for the next year. And certainly, Mr. Wehan insisted that we have it ready to accept solar panels when the future comes to that. This is all stuff going green, and that borough garage should last us 100 years, you know, as far as what we're doing and what we're building, if we maintain it. That's always the key.
I'd once again ask that Councilor Culp had no regret for bringing this up. You learned of it at the last minute, we took advantage of it, and we thank you for it.
Any other council comments? Okay, roll call.
Vice President Gary?
Aye.
Council Kirkland?
Yes.
Council Culp?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Proxel?
Yes.
Council Wehan?
Aye.
President Taroni?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven ayes.
Okay, I thank all, to all the hard work that was done over the last month. Okay, number seven, ratify resolution disclosure self-reporting NCC initiative.
Janice, you're up. SEC self-disclosure, self-disclosure reporting. Laughing at my... We're just recommending that the borough follow along on the same page that the authority is, that we're going to agree to self-disclose. It's just better to be progressive than to have to fix it after the fact. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just think with financing transactions and SEC requirements, that our underwriters and everyone has suggested this is the way to proceed, and certainly don't disagree, and just wanted to make sure council was aware of it. And again, primarily it's authority issue, but because council guarantees the bond issue, council should be aware of what's going on.
Jamie Schlesinger, he, at least through PMF, he assists us in making sure we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed.
And this was something that needed to be done.
It's highly recommended, yes.
Okay, but there was a timeline on completing it?
Yes, and there was some reporting that was never done years ago that we're playing catch-up to.
So, just so council's aware, what you're doing is ratifying, but it was also, it went through our finance committee, Mr. Wehan and Councilor, Vice President Gary agreed to it, so I did already sign it, so you're aware that this occurred.
And I think even from a legal basis, I don't think council needs to actually act on it. I think the manager had the authority to do it anyway, but rather than just allow it to go through, we thought it'd be better to bring it up so everyone was aware of it at the meeting.
Okay, so we will be voting on this on Monday evening, just to ratify this resolution? Is it red? Okay. All right, we're up to number eight, the Cobrookdale Railroad tax exoneration. This is for the old Davis Brothers property located at Glasgow Street. It's now owned by the Cobrookdale Railroad Trust, I guess, correct? You want to come up here, Nathaniel? I'm sure the council will have some questions for you. Go ahead, Erica, you may take the lead on this.
Oh, sure. Okay, no problem. Oh, I'll just give the little background. As you know, Nathaniel is heading up the Cobrookdale Preservation Trust and tourism line. We are partnering that with that in a memorial park in the Pottstown end, and I know that the Davis Brothers property, formerly Davis Brothers property at 1410 Glasgow, can serve as an asset for this endeavor. As a result of that, the trust is a nonprofit corporation now on April 11th, 2014 of this year, now has possession of that property. And as such, Nathaniel and the trust have applied for a tax exemption through Montgomery County. And as a result of that, the timing didn't quite line up, so that exemption didn't quite go through. So, at this point, we're teeing up and trying to get the process together. Want to make you aware of that transaction and ask for some support of the future and the exoneration moving forward. So, I'd like you to take it from there. Okay?
Thanks.
All right.
So, just a few things to annotate that. We, oh, good evening, by the way. We applied and received designation as an institution of purely public charity through the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, and understood sort of after the deadline that we also needed to apply to the county of Montgomery for an exoneration of, designation of tax exempt status for property taxes as an additional step. So, we went through the process and filled out the forms and then found out that having been past their deadline, that we were then going to have to, according to their processes, wait until next year. And so, what we're working to do now is to sort of address that fact through both the borough and the school district with respect to the tax liability for 2014, and then go back to Montgomery County and say, we've worked with our partners in Pottstown and the school district with respect to that type, tax liability for 2014, and go through the process in 2015, as is the requirement.
Now, the taxes that you're asking to be forgiven would be from April to the end of the year.
Right. You know, the liability prior to that would rest with the estate of Mr. Davis.
Well, yes, certainly it's within council's prerogative to forgive or abate taxes. My only suggestion is that since the application for tax exempt status is pending and not yet been granted, it would seem a little premature to do anything until they have obtained their tax exempt status from Montgomery County Board of Assessment. Council's aware that the borough council and the school district have no say over whether or not they're going to get their tax exempt status. That's solely a legal test that the Board of Assessment determines. So, that's something outside of our control. So, I think the request is, presuming that that status is granted, would you forgive the taxes that have accrued from April 11th through the end of the year?
That's right. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So, again, that's certainly up to council to decide, but I know in the past where there's been tax exempt status granted to other nonprofits, council's consider it. The lion's share of their taxes rests with the school district, obviously.
That's a separate conversation.
Certainly up to them.
Have you met with them yet?
Just had the first conversation today. We've been in communication for some time and then finally got the response back that we'll have further conversations.
The total taxes for the property is around $12,000. I think the borough's end of it, around 700, Janice?
Yeah, it's under $1,000, I believe.
Yeah, school district and county, well, the county's probably less than that, but the majority of it is the school district.
And the Board of Assessment, when they hear the case, they're only permitted to grant prospective relief. So, they can't go back and say, well, even though you owned the property in April 2014, you'll get your tax relief back to them. They go forward. So, Nathaniel, again, my understanding is if you're going to have your hearing either this year or next year, they're going to say, assuming you get it, you're going to get tax exempt as of January 1st, 2016. So, you're going to be actually another year
Right.
behind based upon the timing of the submission, which is really, I don't know any fault of yours, but that's just the way they work. So, right now, I think the only request is 2014
That's right.
from April till the end of the year. But again, that would be subject to the approval of the tax exempt status. That's what I understand it anyway.
Steve, the total tax you gave, the amount you gave was from April to the end of the year or for the entire year?
For the entire year.
And whom are we collecting the taxes from currently?
They haven't been paid this year.
They're in penalty. Shouldn't have that been addressed in settlement?
Lots of...
It was, it was not.
He was running a train.
It was not.
Normally, when you settle the sale of a property...
Well, it should have been paid from April to January, but it's an estate that I guess you're dealing with and so forth.
Right.
The property was basically given to you for a dollar or even less or...
It was donated, yeah.
I mean, my concern, and I'm a big fan of, and probably no one on this panel bigger than me, of the railroad and so forth, but there again, too, I'd be a little remiss if I didn't wait until you received your status of being tax exempt to even make a decision on anything with rebating or giving back or not, or exonerating the taxes and so forth. I mean, certainly then this body wants granted, we could always, you know, all right, we'll, you know, come back to us and ask if you could rebate those funds to you and so forth. And then at that time, council certainly could
I'd agree with that.
agree to do that, so... I mean, our hands are tied because we're dealing with tax money here, and certainly, we're all behind the train and so forth, but unfortunately, sometimes timing is of the essence, and unfortunately, you're
I understand.
you're at the caboose at this point.
So, because it wasn't addressed in settlement, if we abate the taxes from April to January, there's no way for us to collect that from the property that is, was, the taxes would do from? Because the transfer of the property...
Well, his responsibility, the trust, would be to pay the taxes from April to December of this year. We would have to go after the estate?
No, again, they're looking at the whole thing. They're only asking, it's going to be his obligation as the property owner to pay the full tax.
Okay.
And then the trust would go back after the estate for that portion. But we're not in a position to bifurcate the responsibility of who owes it. That's going to be on you.
Right.
The request, though, from the railroad is only to abate the portion of the tax that the railroad would pay from the time they acquired ownership. So, again, no...
I have the exact amounts if you want to know them. I gave the figures, so from January to April, that would be the estate would pay it.
But at this point, our solicitor said that they're responsible for everything.
They have to go back and get the estate.
Right, you have to do that, right.
Yeah. Well, the total then for this, let me just make sure I've got the right thing here. The borough and the county together was 2465. This is so tiny, I can't read this here. I'm sorry. The borough and the county together is 3,219, so we were prorating it out. The school is 9383. Those are the total amounts for the whole year.
Those are around $12,000.
Right.
Other thoughts?
I think we have to wait for the county.
I mean, legally, I think that would be the suggestion coming from our solicitor to do that.
Yeah, I don't, again, certainly the only thing you would do is not do anything until you got your tax exempt status. I mean, nothing would happen. Even if you took a motion, subject to, we'd all be waiting for the county to do it anyway.
Anything else you want to say or...
No, I mean, I think to some extent, a motion subject to is a great thing for me to be able to go back to our folks and also the folks in the county and say, this is what the borough has done, understanding that if you don't, if the button doesn't have to do that, then we'll come back and ask you when there's no ambiguity on that end. So, whether we do it that way or whether we do it in motion subject to... So whether we do it that way or whether we do it in motion subject to, I'm sure we'll be in touch.
I'd rather wait, only to give council time to digest on this since this is just coming before them. And hopefully the county will, I don't know, how long does that process take?
Who knows?
Well, you'll get a hearing scheduled at some point. I don't know if it'll be this year or next year, but.
Right. It'll be next year sometime.
They're usually, they're in the downtime right now because most of the appeals hit later in the year. So you shouldn't have any problem getting a hearing before them, so.
Right.
Well, hopefully, you know, this isn't taking that Pottstown is not behind the train. And so often that it gets thrown in our face that we're not behind this project. I know the Water and Sewer Authority saved you over $100,000 recently, so that's.
We're much greater than that.
We are working together on trying to get this project come to fruition. Hopefully that insulator I gave you is worth thousands.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number nine, fire service agreement, 90-day extension.
Yes, council recalls each of the four volunteer fire companies have operated under a fire service agreement with Pottstown. Earlier this year, the manager per your direction had given notice of the termination of that agreement effective December 31st for the idea of consolidation. We're advised that the fire companies are actually in very good negotiation during, for consolidation purposes. And based upon the timing, we think it's probably counterproductive to sever the agreements at the end of this calendar year. So I believe based upon my discussion with Mr. Flanders, he's recommending that we consider extending the existing agreements for another 90 days. We're not, you know, withdrawing our termination notice. We're just causing the 90-day extension with the idea that that'll get us to the finish line with respect to the new entity that's being formed. And they've been meeting regularly over the past
They have been meeting.
Six weeks, so.
Are in the process of forming a entity. It should be allowed to continue its growth and development.
Comments?
One entity, one fire department.
Correct.
I just, my position is, I think, I would like to make clear that I do not view this as, you know, the federal government, a series of continuing resolutions, one after the other. I'm looking at it like this is one 90-day extension. And I expect that this will be resolved before the expiration of that 90 days.
I think that's fair.
If we go back three, four years when all this started, we've been extending, extending, extending.
I can honestly, in the reports we've been receiving from Mr. Wadlam, I believe that this is probably the first time that we are seeing actual progress in the forming of an entity versus just talking about it.
Would they be reasonable for us to hold our single check to them until they get a result?
I can't answer that.
Well, they have their operating expenses already. It's not like they're flush with money that they.
Neither are we.
We have it budgeted though.
We'd ask for a knock to exceed. We'll give them 90 days and that's it.
Well, I agree with Councilor Vice President Gary. And certainly I don't want to see this turn into a closed-loop project. It goes on for many years.
Are we, is there just still going to be one check because we'll have to decide who gets made to?
They will tell us. But I guess, depending on, when you sent out the first allotment.
The end of December will be January's check. So the next time I cut a check, and it'll be, the bill listed is December the 24th.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to cut operating costs. We're obligated as a borough to provide safety for our community members.
We'll handle that internally. And at the end of the day, regardless of how it's done, that total amount will be deducted from, it won't be in addition
Right.
Yeah.
for the year.
So Monday, we will be voting on a one-time 90-day extension. Any other comments? Okay, number 10, pension ordinance.
That's mine. I guess, if council recalls, we, last year about this time, we were contemplating the withdrawal of non-uniform pension funds from PMRS. That's the state pension fund. And we realized that we really didn't have time to do it last year. So throughout this year, we've been working on getting the new plan document prepared, making sure we have an RFP for the plan administrator, setting up the board that would review the pension. And I think we're finally at the position where we wanted to be, realizing that it was a very large task. So we've advertised for your consideration, basically the ordinance that approves the pension plan document. It's probably about 40-page document, but the ordinance is a page and a half. But it's ready for your consideration. It's been prepared by Labor Council with the assistance of the actuary and everybody involved that knows the pension obligations. So we're confident that we have a good plan document. The union and the workers on board with the removal from PMRS. And we're set to move ahead. So as of January 1st, the borough will then administer the pension funds just as we had contemplated last year.
Along with this, there is an appointment that needs to be made of the council designee to be on this pension board. Just as I am on the police pension board, I have volunteered to be on this board. So unless someone else would like to do it, since I am available to go to these day meetings, since I have nothing else to do, I guess we'll have that listed to vote on, I guess, ratification for me for this appointment. Okay, rental ordinance amendment, number 11.
I reported last month that the code licensing inspection was proposing an annual inspection of rental units. Since last month, we've been working on finalizing the ordinance. The ordinance is not finalized, I apologize. I had, I think I told you we'd be ready for December, didn't quite make it. So we're in task and now we're on schedule for January. The working draft is almost completed. We're running our numbers. The concept of this is to have an annual inspection of all rental units. The one thing the ordinance will change however, is presently under our process or our system, is that a changed tendency would trigger an inspection. That would no longer be true under this ordinance. So if you were a landlord that had a unit that had frequent turnover, you're probably spending less on the inspection fee in this case than you would, you know, through an annual inspection. We're also going to attempt to classify the rental units into three categories and coming up with the appropriate fee for the inspection. So that will be ready for discussion at the January meeting. There'll be nothing listed on the agenda for Monday night. But certainly, we're working on it and want to make sure that we have everything in order so it's presented in a common sense, logical fashion so everyone can understand the point of what we're trying to do.
Are the categories apartments, houses, and commercial? What are the three categories?
The three categories are short-term rentals, which is like hotel and motel room and boarding homes. Single-family homes that are rental units would be one category. And then there'll be apartments, which we're still coming up with how many units in a certain structure we qualify as an apartment type. So again, trying to be commensurate with the time involved for the inspection based upon the size of the respective units. So those are the three categories that will be presented.
So that leaves out commercial business. This short term, does that include them?
No, this is residential, residential property. I think that's what we're talking about. Residential rental units are the scope of this ordinance change.
Any other discussion?
I received a phone call from a landlord and he was very much for this new amendment. And he thinks it's great. And so I thought that was good to hear from a landlord to say that he was small for it.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we'll wait till January. Thank you for the update on that. Number 12, property maintenance service bid awards, I guess, is this you Doug?
Yeah, I'll take it. The LNI department needed a bid for property maintenance. Bid went out and they came back in November 20th and 5th. The contracts were broken down into four categories. One was to remove rubbish and other debris. The other, next category was cutting the grass and weeds. And the third was securing the property boardups, doors, windows. And the fourth category was remove snow and ice from private properties, sidewalk and areas. The bid information was given to Chuck Garner and he has offered a review on the documents. And pretty much it's going to go down to the lowest bidder in each category is the way it was prepared. Category one would go to Green Advantage. Category two would go to Greenscape. And category four would go to Greenscape. Chuck, what was the determination on those lumps on prices that was in that category three?
Based upon the way that the bid was submitted Doug, it's just simply adding the four subcategories together. So SMJ is the low when you add those up.
Even though they offered two, you know, there were total bids there instead of the unit price? The 200 and the 250?
Yeah, I understood they were divided out to get the unit price.
Yeah, so the unit price is in there. I mean, I came up with Greenscape was $74 for the total category.
Yeah, well, the problem with Greenscape Doug was they didn't bid for the other OJs.
Okay.
In order to be competitive, each would have to bid each of the four categories. And I would agree with you. If Greenscape would have bid something for subcategory C, most likely they would have been low. But I don't know how you can, you can just not allow them to bid because by virtue of not bidding, their number's lower.
Right. Okay, then SMJ has category three.
Makes sense.
When, so we're waiting for, what's happening now with these areas? Nothing? With the boarding out properties, the?
No, it's being taken care of by, mostly by Public Works and some by Parks and Recreation right now.
And then in these contracts, because these things, you know, happen periodically and they change and properties turnover. So, I mean, in all that, if we get dumping on, you know what I mean? It's not always, oftentimes it's the same property that we're dealing with dumping on. But then other times, as properties turnover, there's dumping on those and dumping on those. And it's like playing catch-up. And so all that would consist, no matter how many properties that we had give them within the year, is going to fall within the bid that they give us.
Yes.
That's how it started.
And it is a one-year period. Any other discussion? Okay, that'll be listed for Monday evening. And we're up to number 13, municipal solid waste services bid.
Okay, it's time for the municipal trash bid again. We had two bidders, as we've had for this couple of times, JP Mascara and Waste Management. The kind the bid was broken into three categories, the trash itself, recycling, and yard waste. The numbers are lower by, in total, by about a half a million dollars. The trash pretty much stays the same as it is once a week, using the 96-gallon toads. The recycling, again, uses the 64-gallon toads and that stays on the same schedule. The real difference would be in the yard waste, where we have it going from what was twice a month or every, yeah, twice a month. And then on Wednesdays from April through October and then switching over to leaves in the fall for every Wednesday. Now, we're going to have, in the present configuration, every Wednesday starting in April through December, the 3rd Wednesday of December, every Wednesday the yard material we picked up now. Hoping to eliminate the situations where we have bags that just get left out there because they, for whatever the reason, didn't get picked up, didn't get out on time. So every Wednesday now, the exception would be a holiday. We would skip a holiday if that would happen. But otherwise, there'll be roughly 42 pickups now on yard material as opposed to we had 27 before, so.
And just as a point of clarification, yard material is leaves, branches, old tomato plants.
Correct.
Old pepper plants, and that will carry through. So when leaves are supposed to be picked up, everything can be put in the yard waste situation.
Right. Yeah, there really doesn't have to be a distinction anymore on the leaves. It's just going to be yard material throughout the whole year now. And then there'll be four additional pickups in January for Christmas trees. So really, there's only going to be two months out of the year where we're not picking anything up in yard material.
And however that's done too, if people put it out there that the Christmas trees cannot have a plastic bag around them.
All the, it's critical that all the yard material be in biodegradable bags, containers, or whatever because that stuff all goes into a grinder, tub grinder, and it gets ground up. And if you throw plastic bags in, you're going to have all little pieces of plastic. And then the mulch, or the final product, is going to have all this debris in it, so.
And they will not pick it up. So residents got to know, take that bag off and put it in the recycling. Because once it's outside, it doesn't matter if the leaves are falling on the rest. That'll be composed out.
So one recommendation for council Monday, for Monday night. We also had in this bid also categories put in here for the school district. There was some interest on trying to see whether there'd be any savings for the school district. So we have two different lines in here, trash and the recycling. So we'll have to be, we'll be talking to them to see whether they're interested in taking advantage of these numbers, whether they're better than theirs, I don't know at this moment.
One area of clarification that they're going to be checking on with the haulers and also our solicitor is the, whether three-year or five-year. If you notice the tipping fees and so forth for the three and the five. So they're going to, you know, do some double checking on that and check with our solicitor. So the recommendation's either to be for three-year or for five-year for Monday. Along with that cost per residence. Any questions?
I'd just like to say, I think it extends a wonderful opportunity for civic and community groups to get in on detailing the green spaces and open spaces, especially at when the leaves start falling, you know, in the autumn. And having that extra December pickup for leaves, you know, it's really going to stretch the cleanliness through the winter. You know, sometimes people leave everything stuck up against the bushes or underneath. I think, I think it's a great opportunity. Almost close to double. It's good.
That was always one of my pet peeves. I'd always forget when the pickup was for yard waste, and I'd put them in the bag. And then it'd sit out for a couple of weeks, and I'd go to pick it up and the bottom would fall out from it because it already degraded, so.
And one of the other keys too is the street at the curb. You know, that needs to be cleaned up too with the leaves. I mean, also often, I think when people, the leaves hit the street, it's not mine anymore, you know? But that just clogs our storm sewers. It causes issue with stormwater runoff and it goes on and on and on. And then you got the snow plowing that occurs, so. Okay, we're up to number 14, towing bid awards. I guess evidently Mann's was the winner?
Well, Mann's, the towing bids are for Class 1 towing license. We award, I think it's every two years. We go out for bid for Class 1 towing licenses and it's kind of the opposite. We're not paying the vendor, the vendor is paying us. And we had two bidders this year. The town is split in half, east and west. And there's a Class 1 license issued for each half of town. Mann's bid for the western. Mann's bid for the western half of Pottstown and Santatoga Autobody bid for the east side of Pottstown. Both, the minimum bid is $600. Both offered up the minimum bid, however, I believe Santatoga was slightly above that. It was $637, I believe. But regardless, they were the only two bidders, and I know that, I think there's still some work the police department has to do as far as verification, and then it'll be subject to the solicitor's review.
Both companies' services have been satisfactory to pass? Any questions?
That's paying us for their opportunity to do that part of the...
They're paying us for the license rate. Correct.
Certainly, when we changed over that years ago, I mean, it used to be a free-for-all in the borough as far as towing, and you'd have, you could count on some, and sometimes you couldn't, and, you know, it just was a nightmare, and that...
Towing wars.
It was under your tutelage that we changed all of that, so we haven't got that in place. It certainly has made things, life easier.
Our now chief brought that to a head several years ago.
To you.
Yes.
I gave you credit, you were a George. All right, planning, 256 and 260 High Street, toward subdivision, Mr. Garner.
This is, no new development proposed. An existing building presently sits on one parcel. The applicant wants to basically divide it into two lots down the party wall of the building. So it's, there's really no planning here, per se. The planning commission did review the subdivision plan. I don't know that there was really any specific comments. Rather straightforward. Should have some information concerning four waivers that were recommended by our engineer. The waivers relate to the fact that there is really no new construction ongoing, and there's no real need to provide existing features within 100 feet of the site, contour, elevations on the site, Phase 1 environmental, or those types of issues. So unless there's any questions, Dan and Steve can jump in, but it was rather straightforward and would allow the property owner to sell either one of the lots once it's created.
Is that building currently vacant?
I thought that was where the...
No, Vista's, right? Financial district, yeah, financial, Tompkins, thank you.
And that's just there, that's just open, Tompkins.
Yes. I believe the other half of the building is the senior aging and adult, yes.
Perspective from planning, this is about as simple as it gets when it comes to people as... All right, that'll be listed for Monday evening. Number 16, zoning, this is in my ward. It's concerning a sign they want to put up on their property, and my recommendation would just be let it continue through to zoning.
Yeah, there's actually two things, Steve. One is, one is they like to install a shed on the, on a portion of the property. The shed's a little larger. Of course, it's the whole Hanover Court Apartments. And the signs are a little misleading because the signs are already there. All they want to do is basically change the face of the sign to change the name of the apartment complex and change some of the numbering of the units. So I'm not sure if there's any real issue with the sign, and that's what they're asking.
Okay, your end items. A, adopt the 2015 proposed budget. Any discussion on this? B, adopt the ordinance to fix the tax rate for 2015. Any discussion on this?
And again, these are all Monday night actions. Everything has been advertised, so the idea is you're going to basically vote on the budget and the tax ordinance for next year.
C, amendment fee resolution. Anything on this?
Well, there's a few fee changes, and we're still working on those, so that will probably hit later this week or Monday.
As soon as you can get that to us, thank you.
I mean, nothing significant, but just a normal, normal adjustment.
My goal is to try to get it to the counselors by Friday so that you have over the weekend to look at it.
And if you could highlight the changes, whatever they are?
I'm going to have what it is and what we would, we're changing it to.
That should satisfy Counsel Miller's request.
Thank you.
The 2015 council meeting schedule that will be adopted, sewer budget will be adopted with no increase, correct? Board vacancies, we have lighted property. We have four, are these for Monday night, are these for...
January. These will be for January unless otherwise noted. I think they're placed on the agenda only to make you aware that they're need to be filled, so if anybody's interested, those will all be happening in January or the expiration of the term. Again, planning commission's February, but most others are January.
Whose terms up in planning?
Andrew Kiefra.
If you could get in touch with him, Dan, and see if he wants to re-apply since he's had...
Yeah, I'll talk with him. He has difficulty with his complex.
Right. So if you could have a discussion with him. Okay, and the zoning hearing board, that's...
Was he any of these professional positions? I think we need a...
Yeah, one railer, probably.
Really?
Yeah, one was a railer, and the other one's Levi resigned. We have an opening on the EAC. Anyone in the audience is interested in that, the Environmental Advisory Commission, if anyone's interested in that, please let us know. Okay, we're up to, well, first I wanted the zoning hearing board. Who's up on that? Is that Bob Johnson? He has requested, and how about the alternative, I don't think...
He submitted a name.
Okay, good. Do we have somebody for that? All right, now we're up to the add-on, which is the resolution for the deputy tax collector. I guess this is an appointment done by the tax collector, and I guess we need a resolution to, you were at the conference, Janice, if you want to...
We had it for the end of, it came with the new regime of the county when they started enforcing their fees, and you have to pay for an extra duplicate. And one of the things that they wanted was, since the tax collector wasn't collecting, they wanted the resolution. So I think we did it for '12 and '13. And then there was a little going on with the tax collector in 2014, '15, and we never did it. So we need to have it for '15 year.
But I'm correct in assuming you're the deputy...
Yes, yes, yes. And we would, they're asking, they would like people to bring it with them when we reconcile in January, which really didn't give everybody a lot of time, depending on when their meeting was, so.
You have me, you should get us together.
It'll be ready for...
We have to, we're going down January the 9th.
Any discussion on this? Okay, we're up to comments from citizens present.
Diane Crum.
How are you doing? I'd like to say that, kind of back up what the police commissioner said. I believe that lights out, or movie cameras outside residences and businesses is a very good thing. I wonder whether council could make it part of codes that when someone wants to start a business, or maybe renovate a major apartment building, that they must put cameras outside. Also, because we are in the middle of a heroin and gang epidemic, which is not going to go away, which I have kind of done a little research, and yes, it is all over, but we don't live all over. We have not really increased the size of our police department in years. We always have people out on comp or illnesses or various reasons. I think it's time that we look at a larger police department. As a homeowner, I hate to pay taxes, but if it's for my own protection, excuse me, I really wouldn't complain. So I would like you to, for next year, to consider increasing the size of the police department, be it part-time or whatever, and consider insisting that businesses use cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Your suggestion as far as new businesses having cameras and so forth, is that something we can, we can suggest it, like at planning, when somebody comes before us, but is that something that requires?
We don't have anything in our ordinance that presently requires it. It's an interesting concept.
Our zoning ordinance committee will look into that, I'm sure. Thank you for bringing that to us.
We did have a discussion earlier in the year about that with the downtown security concerns, which was a question I posed to the chief about, was it possible for them to have to have them? And at that point, I think we were able to force. Suggest this is a nice word.
Anyone know what the cost would add to a project with something like that? I mean, a small building, I mean...
Doug, do you just ballpark what a security system...
I mean, the quality of the cameras, probably the biggest issue with DVR is not expensive at all. I mean, you might pay $4,000, $5,000, depending on how many cameras and stuff. Very convenience store has a...
My neighbor, my neighbor just put cameras at his house, and I think he went to, like, Best Buy and got it set up for like $350 bucks. I had to get eight cameras, and I don't know what else was involved with it. But I mean, it's something that's not overly expensive, like for maybe a homeowner, you know? And I don't understand why a small business couldn't do the same thing.
I would think there'd be a reduction in insurance premium, if you would like it.
Possible, potentially.
But again, that, that might depend on the clarity of the picture that's taken, whether it was really useful to go to the expense or not.
Keeper cameras certainly don't give you a very good quality sometimes.
And a DVD, when they're running on a DVD, how long does that last? 24 hours in it?
It depends on how, you know, it depends on the pixels and the camera and stuff. Some of those are built in 30, 60 days.
Really? Wow.
Many come with a terabyte of memory now, too, or if they're not more, which is quite a lot.
I'm still remembering the old casinos having their tape banks and... Okay, general discussion by counselor. Counselor Kirkland, anything? Counselor Gary?
Well, I can't believe it's time to do this already, but I'm going to give a quote from Clement Clarke Moore from a visit from St. Nicholas, and just very simply say, "Happy Christmas to all and to all a good night."
I look forward to your quotes every, every meeting. Counselor...
I know Thanksgiving's ever, but it's time of the year, I want to say thanks to our finance committee, your management and staff here in Borough Hall. They worked very hard for us this year.
Thanks. Counselor Proxel?
Well, I'm definitely going to get some more cameras. I've had some pretty, you know, close action to my place in the past, but now this weekend, if I had a, you know, cameras like I wanted in the back of my garage, I would have caught pretty much all of it. So that's certainly something I'm going to invest in. And they're, like you said, they're not expensive, and there's various grades. And if you had just put it on a desk and you just turn it into the police department, you know, you give your name.
Counselor Paul?
Nothing there.
Counselor Bill?
My thank you goes out to Counselor Proxel this month because building a safer community is looking out for one another. And Counselor Proxel always knows one of his neighbor in his neighborhood, and he always makes a point to check in and check up on me to make sure everything's okay. So I thank you very much for that. And I have kind of one request from Doug for stone in the alley between 9th and 10th Street that's been on the "We'll See What We Can Do" list for six months. If we can either move it past that to say we can't do anything, or if we could just get some of the ruts filled and the little lake that's building at the end of the alley towards State Street, and to prevent my neighbor's business from flooding, I would appreciate it.
Mayor?
I'd just like to say, with some greater regional partners, I am planning a tri-state meeting of mayors that are serving in urban communities. This meeting will probably happen either in the main line or in Philadelphia to make ease of travel for people coming from New Jersey and Delaware. So I'm looking forward to that. And have a happy holiday.
Okay, I thank all, and for Monday evening, we also will be voting on the conditional use for the funeral parlor. So just a reminder, with that, that's located at 1133 High Street. And executive session items, any?
Yes, three. Two personnel and one judicial deliberation.
We are adjourned, and we will have no action.